We good? Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of "Oh, Canada."
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True hatred, love in all our sons command. With holy hearts we see the light, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our hand, for us stand free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay. Record of attendance, Linda, you're good there. Declaration's a conflict of interest. Anyone, you can step away when the time comes.
Challenge? Are you allowed to challenge that concerning my question concerning conflict of interest?
Are you, you mean, are you allowed to?
I have a challenge if someone says they do not have a conflict of interest, you're not allowed to challenge that or ask.
No. No. Not a con, you can't challenge a conflict. Okay, approval of agenda, additions or deletions. So, we have, you've got a paper in front of you. Deleted is eight D, the presentation from the Dog Park. They didn't need to come in. And additions, we have attached to the sheet, I received today, Black Educators Association regarding the use of South Centennial School. And I have, I'm gonna add some here. Councilor Hood, notice of reconsideration, did you want that on there?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll put that under eleven B, additions. Eleven C. No, I guess I don't need any of those. Okay, any more additions, anyone? Go ahead, deputy.
Thank you, your worship, on seven D, transit, update on transit bus. I talked to the C A O earlier and he's gonna have a report from staff, so I think that will be ready for committee of the whole, so we can discuss that at that time.
Okay. So you wanna keep it?
I would take it off and do it committee of the whole.
Okay, so I'm gonna remove seven D. Anything else, anyone? Okay, and I'm looking for a motion with the additions and deletions. Okay, councillor Barry, councillor McLeod, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, approval of minutes, town council, August tenth, two thousand seventeen.
So moved?
Deputy?
Second.
Second councillor Barry, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, committee of the whole, August twenty fourth.
So moved?
Thank you, deputy?
Second.
Second councillor Wade?
Wade.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, council, August twenty fourth.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question, your worship.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, business arising. Second reading to amendments of the taxi bylaw. Okay, C A O, so where do we, next steps here?
So, your worship, when we amend a bylaw, it requires two readings. Last month, the amendments to the taxi fares was, was read first, and tonight, the opportunity for the community to be heard on that amendment would be now, and so you would call for anybody that wishes to speak. Once everyone who wished to speak on the amendment has done so, then a motion to approve second reading would be in order.
Okay. So I'll ask three times if anybody wants to speak to the taxi, taxi amendments to the taxi bylaw, I'll ask three times. Would anyone like to speak to this issue? Anyone like to speak to this issue? Third and final time, would anyone like to speak to the amendments to the taxi bylaw? Okay, hearing no one, I'm looking for a motion to approve second reading. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Strategic priority update. Go ahead, C A O.
Your worship, last January, council met in a workshop and set some strategic priorities for your first year and your mandate. The request before you this evening is to direct staff to arrange for December of this year and update on those, another workshop to update those strategic priorities.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Go ahead. Request for decision, Arts and Culture Centre.
Your worship, one of the strategic priorities, in fact, the top strategic priority of council, within that process last January was to establish a downtown arts and culture centre. We've engaged McKay, Lion's Sweet Apple as consultants to assist us in that process, which they have been doing since, since the spring. In that process, we asked them to look at several land assemblies in the downtown and to advise us on, on which they felt was the most opportune for, for the project. They identified the block between First, Second, Collins and Alma Streets, which consists mainly of the Collins Street parking lot, as the, as the preferred location. This is consistent with the advice that council received somewhere in the area of eight years ago from Colliers International, when we did the downtown blueprint. What I'm asking you for tonight is to confirm that site as the future site of the downtown arts and culture centre.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Good. Update, D is removed, new business capital cost projections. That's you, I don't think I have anything here.
Yeah, your worship, as part of the work that McKay, Lion's Sweet Apple is undertaking for the town of Yarmouth around the, the concept for the arts and culture centre, they had offered and to, to seek quotations from a qualified cost consultant to come up with a class D estimate of construction costs for the centre. And so they've gone to two qualified companies that they've worked with in the past and received, you know, bids from them. The bids are summarized in a memo in your package, and it's recommended that council accept the lowest bid from Hanscom in the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars plus H S T.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? You call for the question there, Jim? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, committee of the whole, date change. So, I'm away next week, I think you're away, I think you're away. So we're looking for an October fifth meeting at three thirty.
It's Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
I'm away.
Okay, do you wanna make a motion for that to happen? Oh, are you checking your calendar, Cliff?
It has to be that or the next one's the?
Next one's council.
Next one's council. Do we need a, this?
Oh, we need a committee of the whole, right? Yes. Yeah, okay.
So moved by January, October, Thursday, October the third.
Thursday, October the fifth.
Yeah, fifth, sorry.
Yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, supporting housing needs assessment framework request.
Your worship, we have a request, this is a funding request from the Tri-County Women's Centre. They're looking to do a regional housing needs assessment, and so they've asked each municipality to participate in the study, and if you participate in the study, then, then the, the housing needs or survey is conducted with your, in your area, and if you don't participate, then the study doesn't take place in your area. The estimated cost for the town of Yarmouth to be included in that study is one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And a copy of the survey, I'll, I'll call it draft survey, I believe, is attached. Yes, it is. So, that is for your consideration.
Okay, so, I'll start. We did call housing, and another study is not going to get us any more housing, any more units, and it's not going to have any weight. I also called local housing today, and the waitlist is a hundred and ninety-one people. Now, let me say, I, let me, let me correct that. A hundred and ninety-one families, seniors, non-elderly folks, those families means it's over two hundred people looking to get into housing. That's, I don't know about you, but that says we need something, but it's, but it's, we don't need a study to tell us that. And with the call to, to provincial housing, I'm good, I'm good where we are. We have work to be done, but I'm good where we are. So, if, if somebody wants to move, to make it happen, fine, otherwise, we can place on file.
So you can place on file, your worship?
Okay. Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, I'd like to advise them of that, too.
You would like to?
No, I mean, I would like us to advise, okay, so that they, they can do that, okay? Supporting housing, presentation, no, Dog Park Committee, presentation NSCC programming and make way campaign. So, Mary Thompson sent something in, and she would like to come present on NSCC programming and our make way campaign. She said she would need about twenty minutes, we can ask her to, to cut that back, for presentations are usually ten minutes. So we can get that on, if it's?
Make a motion, your worship, we accept the request from Nova Scotia Community College regarding the make way campaign.
Okay.
I think it's available now.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Worship.
Yep, can I have your light? So it, just, just so we can hear you. Go ahead, councillor.
Something like this, sometimes, I think that there, when you get specific requests from an organization for a time slot of a certain time, I think it would be within our, within our bylaws and so on, to accede to that if we want to, we can amend.
Oh, we, the time, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, we certainly could.
Rather than have it come and then we let them go on, beyond, without saying, but if we approve it now, so I'd make a motion that, or an amendment that, to the motion that we permit up to ten, twenty minutes for the presentation.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Did you, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, who's second? Sandy, you, you okay with the change?
Yeah.
So up to twenty minutes?
Up to twenty minutes.
Because it was a specific request?
For this presentation, yes.
Exactly. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, councillor Hood, you can turn your light there. Presentation, re-Yarmouth Shark Scramble, we received something from Caitlin Buchanan. The last line reads, "I'd like to tell council, I think it's time to say no more to the Shark Scramble," and she's provided information then in there as to why, but the Shark Scramble isn't ours, so, go ahead.
Uh, make a motion, receive and place on file, but if there ever was a presentation, or maybe I'd like it to be from Dalhousie, the Ocean, or the Ocean Institute in Bedford, just for, for scientific and clarification reasons.
So, so you know, maybe the next time they're in town?
Yeah.
We can just offer, they don't have to come down for a special meeting, but, okay, so a motion to place on file, second councillor Barry or councillor McLeod, any further discussion? Questions been, go ahead. Councillor Hood?
So why wouldn't we want to hear from them?
What's that?
Why wouldn't we want to hear from them?
Um.
Are, are we afraid that they might say you shouldn't have it, Shark Scramble?
No, 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 she's ve, no, not at all.
That's what they're saying.
She, yeah, she's very clear in, in her info, in, in her information, but the, it, it's not for us to decide if there's a Shark, Shark Scramble.
I'm not, I'm not indicating that at all, but why wouldn't we let them, if, I, doesn't she want to come in?
Mm-hmm.
So why wouldn't we let them come in? I mean, the, the people she's working with are significant players in, in the environmental movement, and, and, you know, they're prominent professors at Dalhousie and so on, Boris Worm and, and Ransome Myers.
Yeah, but she's not working with them, she's, she's just stating, she's just giving information.
What they, what they hold, yes.
Yes.
All right. Just ask the question, why wouldn't we let them in? I'm not afraid to hear.
No, we're not.
I'm not saying where I stand on the issue, I'm just saying, why should, why cut them off?
I, I'll withdraw the motion, but if we want to do that, I have no problem, maybe asking the Shark People Scramble with the scientific research they presented to, to some of us before the last Shark Scramble tournament to come in and make a presentation also.
Yeah, that would even be better.
Yeah, it's up, whatever you guys want to do.
It's a long wait, or we don't have to do it next week either.
That's right.
Okay, so where are we going? Where are?
Make a motion, we accept the request.
Okay.
And then after that, we'll, I think after that, the other people will probably come in and want to make a presentation also.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, nay. Motion carried. Tender Stars Road multi-use trail, C A O.
Your worship, the tender for the construction of the multi-use trail on Stars Road, and that goes from Maude Lewis Trail up to Charles Crosby Drive on the south side of Stars Road, was advertised in the provincial procurement website and in the local paper with closing date of September nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Four responses were received from contractors with the results summarized in the memo from the town engineer. Tenders were checked for arithmetic errors and documentation completeness, including bid security, workers' compensation, insurance coverage. The lowest tender amount was within the budget allocation of one hundred and fifty thousand and within the construction estimate. Therefore, it is recommended the tender be awarded to Garian Construction in the amount of ninety-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents plus H S T, and that is for your information and approval.
So moved, your worship.
And everything you just read said it's apples to apples, right?
That's what it said, apples to apples.
Wow. Moved and seconded, councillor Hood?
So I have a question, your worship, for the C A O, took a look at that the other night. Have we foreclosed with the construction of the existing Maude Lewis Trail and this particular project, the ability to open the extension of Brooklyn Road, south from Stars, onto Clements Avenue?
Okay, what, south from Stars? Oh, I can't read.
We have a plan, we, we have a plan for a street extending Brooklyn.
Gotcha.
South from Stars Road, behind the Carquest or whatever that is now, to, to connect up to Clements eventually and go down Clements So.
I was in the wrong block. Yep, go ahead, C A O, you're on.
So, your worship, you lost me on the Brooklyn Street, but I caught up.
Yeah, me too.
The, the, actually, the last piece of land.
Crosby.
Crosby, yeah. The last piece of land that we needed to purchase in order to have the land assembly, we just purchased within the last couple of years, so we do have that. The Maude Lewis Trail as it exists right now does cut across and would have to be, you know, excavated and removed for a section of probably sixty feet or so to allow the street to come through at that point.
And then how would we do the connection? It would be cutting the Maude Lewis Trail.
Right, so a crosswalk or something at that point to, to allow people at Stars Road.
Well, when we do these things, we need to think it through.
So what this does, this piece goes from Maude, the end of Maude Lewis Trail.
Yes.
Up to Charles Crosby Drive in front of Amanda Everland. So, the intention is, is that ultimately, all along the, the south side of Stars Road, you would have a pedestrian active transportation route all the way up to Hard Scratch Road, all along there.
All right, I've asked the question, thank you, I've got the answer.
You good? So, we had a motion and a seconded?
I moved, Linda.
Okay.
Councillor Barry, seconded.
Good, any further discussion?
Question, your worship.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, reports, let me just get rid of this stuff. Council, committee of the whole, deputy mayor, you're on.
Thank you, your worship, I move that council approved granting a license to four Coroners Housing to place a clothesline pole at thirty-four Church Street, subject to entering into an agreement as prepared by our solicitor, and subject to the conditions that it could be removed at a future date and on the condition that it be constructed in a manner that requires a four-foot deep hole and six-by-six post. That's a lot for a clothesline, but.
It is. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Your worship, I move that the YMCA be advised that deputy mayor Phil Mooney, councillor Jim McLeod, C A O Jeff Gueshu, and director of finance Jerry Varon will attend the initial meeting on September the fourteenth, will finalize committee members following that meeting, and I think that did not happen.
Yeah, so.
So I'll with, I'll withdraw that.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that council accept the recommendation from the director of, I lost it.
Finance.
I got it.
Lost.
I got it. Uh, from the director of finance that the budget be amended to change of following transfers to the capital fund. One million dollars for demolition of the cotton mill be moved to the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission funding. Should we do these both together? And the second one is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for Mariners Centre capital projects be moved to the Mariners Centre funding.
Moved and seconded, does anybody have any questions on either one of those? Good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Your worship, I move that staff be directed to pull together the following, R C M P, Local ATV Association, or M L A, council representation, and town engineer to view, to review options to connect the North and South Rail trails.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. This, this may not happen, but.
It's a, it's a first stepping stone.
It's a step, yeah. Okay, so we good? Thank you, deputy. Citizen advisory committees, planning advisory, councillor McLeod.
Worship.
Yes.
The director of the, of the, of the chair.
Good, thank you. Yeah, so is he gonna, yeah, he's gonna do that one first, right, right on. Okay, sorry, councillor McLeod, I was just trying to find the order. You're good.
Thank you.
So we're gonna do the one we started with this evening.
So, the, the recommendation from the hearing, I move to amend the land use bylaw to rezone vacant properties located at one Haskell Street and two Pearl Street from low-density residential to waterfront industrial, as outlined in Morris's report, and to consider an increase in the height restriction in the M two zone from thirty-five feet to forty feet, as outlined in our planner's report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Did you call for the questions, Sandy? Yep, question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
So as a result, of our P A C meeting on two days, two days ago, want to make three, three motions, please. I'm, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, enter into a development agreement to establish a medical clinic for counselling and consulting at twenty-one Collins Street, as outlined in the planner's report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the M P S, our strategy and our land use bylaw to permit cash in lieu for residential parking, as outlined in our planner's report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Third and last, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the strategy and the land use bylaw to permit the use of the building at two Herbert Street and the adjacent property at six Herbert Street, as a food bank operation, as outlined in our planner's report.
So moved. Need a seconded? Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, reports, Communities in Bloom, councillor Dennis, do you wanna, I know there's a report, but if you want to quickly, you want to put your light on so we can, that's all right, I can't hear you. Go ahead.
The town of Yarmouth participated in the Canada one fifty category, and it was a one-time special, non-competitive category to provide communities with the opportunity to showcase achievements in greening their community and celebrate Canada's one fiftieth anniversary. So, the town of Yarmouth received five leaves, which normally we get blooms, but this year they did leaves. So that was a bronze rating and a special mention for our downtown core streetscape during the two seventeen National International Symposium and Awards ceremonies in Ottawa Gatineau. And our judges that were here, they gave us an evaluation saying, I'll just tell you a little bit of what they wrote. As the gateway to Canada and Nova Scotia, Yarmouth is an important entry point to Canada from the ferry between Yarmouth and Portland, Maine. The downtown core streetscape and ongoing facade program have been successful to enhance the diversity of buildings that line Main Street and to bring back the character of the commercial district, trying to incorporate green spaces into commercial space is commendable. The streetscape revitalization includes hanging flower baskets from charming lampposts, colorful murals, bump outs with trees planting, and urban furniture with a distinctive signature. With Canada one fifty banners and flags flying, the community is bathed in Canada's celebration in the downtown.
Good stuff.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. I wondered why the leaves. Go ahead.
By the way, I just wanted to thank our committee, Communities in Bloom Committee, for the great work that they're doing.
Good stuff. Okay, everything else is on there. Questions for committee chairs? Did you, deputy, did you want to update us on the wind farm? I know that.
Yeah, I just got to, yeah, I was, I was, we had a notice today from the C A O in the first year, not the fiscal year, but the first year of the turbines being in.
in the first year, not the fiscal year, but the first year of the turbines being in service. That's between us, the municipality of the District of Argyle, and the District of Yarmouth. I think our share, Jeff, was $38,000.
It was.
Net profit for the year. I think the, the outage, or it was projected about 31% more than what they thought it was. They, they budgeted, or they, they sought it on the low end, so we did quite well. Also, yesterday, they talked a little bit about some solar energy opportunities, but the payout is not as good as what the turbines is, but they're putting a, a bid in that has to be in by the 29th of September. There's a solar energy component that the provincial government or Efficiency Nova Scotia has this year for $250,000 for projects. They're putting in numerous applications. There's no cost to us for the application, and any application that is accepted in the Yarmouth, Argyle, or the District of Yarmouth area, if we don't see a significant benefit environmentally or cost-wise, we don't have to enter into any agreement. So, they're putting all those together, and we have a company that's doing it. They do not get paid until there's a agreement in place, so they're doing that for us. So, that could be very interesting. It's 250,000, I think, this year, 350, I think, next year. I think it's a million dollars over three years. So, it's not as good as a comp fit program, but it's very good. And I know Counselor Cleveland sits on the committee, and former Counselor McKenzie's the chair, and they've done some excellent work, and they're also actually looking for some other opportunities, too, so, you know, it won't be as lucrative as a comp fit program, but they are looking at other opportunities.
There was, uh, when we sat at one of the committees, the idea of putting the clock, I call it a clock, but, you know, where you would be able to go on the computer, log on, and watch-
How much?
I'm just gonna say, watch the money roll in.
Yeah.
Right? $38,000 in a year.
Yeah.
For those two small turbines.
Yeah.
I don't know if we ever got that far. Wade, you don't remember if they- Yeah. It's pretty, it's pretty neat.
And they're also going to put some signage out there by the turbines and clean up the area a little bit, so you won't be able to drive a car around it, but you'll be able to read about and, and the, the joint program between the three municipal units, so-
Good stuff.
It was good, good meeting yesterday.
Thanks, Deputy. Okay, any more questions for committee chairs? Anybody? Good? Okay, additions.
I got a question for the chairman of the water utility. I'm the chairman of the water utility.
What are you gonna ask yourself there, Cliff?
I've been working, uh, the federal government is conducting a round of consultations, some of which impact the water utility, and I have prepared a brief on behalf of the town in relation to an issue involving possible changes to Section 35 of the Fisheries Act that might negatively impact our operations out there, and I intend to make representations in that regard on the 28th of September over at the Grand.
Okay, those are, those are public presentations, so you don't-
Well, let, all right, thank you. This government here likes to sneak around and invite just the people that are gonna, yes, we want you to do it, we, the ones that they already know, agree with them. I had to sneak into this because I found out about it another way, but I realized that we are stakeholders, and I've shoved my shoehorn into the shoe very vigorously, and we're gonna be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm not criticizing, I'm not criticizing the McNeil government, I'm criticizing the federal government. Meetings at the Grand.
Oh, okay.
In Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, Canada. I forget. Linda's got my, Linda has all my paperwork. She's been working on the file for me today.
I was gonna ask Cliff to send us an email, but that's not gonna happen.
We haven't, no, we haven't. Linda will send the email to you. Or Joss, or someone else, or Deborah.
Help us. Thank you, Counselor. Okay, you can turn your light off. And any, and any other questions for committee chairs? We're good? Additions. So, 11A, and attached to the additions, you'll see the, there's a two-page letter. I spoke with, with Brenda Clark, or Brenda, I'm sorry. Is she Brenda Clark, Dawn?
Brenda.
But was she Brenda Clark?
Yes.
That's how I, that's why I said that. Okay, so Brenda, I spoke with Brenda on the phone last week, and I just said to, to send in, for time's sake, to send in this letter. So, basically, they are asking for the use of South Centennial School for this program. Did you want to speak to that? Okay. Yep. Sure, okay. So, do you want to make, someone want to make a motion to refer to staff? Understanding that, that the program starts October the 3rd, so whatever we do, we'll just take, and I did just get this this afternoon, okay? Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Notice of reconsideration, re-heritage, that you, Counselor Hood?
Your Worship, approximately a month ago, there was a meeting of the Heritage Advisory Committee. I missed the meeting, and I missed the meeting because of my own negligence. Frankly, I didn't know as a member of the committee, so I didn't open up the agenda item.
Could you write that down, Linda?
And so, after the meeting, we had our council meeting, and I left on a conflict on an item, and while I was down there, they dealt with my item, and then I was gabbing in the back while council declared the heritage item that was before, and approved a recommendation of the Heritage Committee. A few days later, I was in signing my water checks, and Janet Watson has temporarily taken on the job of Heritage Coordinator, and she brought to my attention, first she asked me how come I wasn't at the meeting, and I said, well, I didn't know I was on the committee, and that's my fault. And then she brought up the fact that there was an issue before the committee, I don't know why she asked me, I wish she hadn't, and I looked at it, and I said, well, why'd they do that? So, what I, so what I, what I want to do is because I wasn't there, and because it is an issue that might, well, all of us might want to look at, I'm not sure how many of us really saw that presentation, I make a motion to reconsider council decision at the last meeting to approve the recommendation, and secondly, that council, if it does make, if it does, if it does approve reconsideration, to refer it back to the Heritage Advisory Committee for another look at it.
Okay. So, do you know what he's talking about? The door?
It's a door with side lights on.
No, they didn't know what, they didn't know what, what he was talking about. Okay. Good? Okay, so, moved, I used- Oh, sorry.
You have to deal with the notice of motion first.
Right on.
So, do I have a mo, a seconder? I move?
Don't need one.
Don't, so that's, now, do we take a motion to refer it?
Yeah. It'll be on next meeting. Go ahead, CAO.
Sorry, Your Worship, so, the, the process is that if council makes a decision, that mo, that decision cannot be revisited within a calendar year unless there is notice of motion given at a regular council meeting. So, tonight, the council is giving notice of motion. That means it will be on the agenda, excuse me, of the next council meeting-
October the 5th.
October the 5th, to be, 12th, sorry, to, to deal with it. And so, council hasn't agreed to reconsider it yet.
Yeah.
You've just given notice of motion, so I don't know that-
Now, I understand. And so, it'll be on Committee of the Whole on the 5th? No, just at council?
You're good? So, we're all right?
Thank you, Your Worship.
Was that it for additions? Okay, update wind project. Okay, well, good. So, I'm looking for approval of invoices, please. Can I have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, my goodness, not even late. Invoices approved. Date of next meeting is October 12th, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Well, we have to adjourn this meeting, don't we? Oh, okay, motion to go in camera. I don't know what's wrong with us tonight. Okay, good. Good. Okay, so we're, we're going back in camera, guys, for he has one more thing to discuss. Okay, Kevin, you looking for me? You can knock on the door when you're ready.